Okay, good evening and welcome to the Crestwood Board of Education School Board Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Mr. Secretary, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Fawaz.
Here.
Trustee Sabah.
Here.
Trustee Williamson.
Here.
Trustee Aiman, Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Badun.
Here.
Madam President.
Here.
We're all here.
We have a quorum. A pledge of allegiance, I'd like to call up our Riverside Middle School students from Mrs. Tumalino and Mrs. Harris' class. We have with us Alan Kamil, Fatma Hadi, Sarah Mohammed, and Ali Mukallid. Can you guys come up here, please? And lead us in the pledge? If you stand right here, you can get a good angle on the camera and there we go. Okay, ready? We'll start when you do. One.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[106.51][106.54](Applause)
And if you, uh, if you guys could just come up here. Ali Mukallid. Ali, here's your certificate.
What do you say? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sarah Mohammed.
Nice job, Ali.
Fatma Hadi.
Stay here. We'll take a picture.
Alan. Alan? Aline. Aline. Okay, let's take a picture.
You can bring her up. Bring her up.
Bring her, bring her. Please bring her up.
You know, we don't have that many people.
Let's run them out side by side.
Never seen, I love you.
There we go.
Thank you.
That is becoming my favorite part of the meetings.
Nice job, guys.
Okay, thank you again to our Riverside students and to our staff who brought them. We appreciate that. Okay, so I only ask that if you're going to leave the meeting, please try to do so quietly. We're gonna go on with our agenda and we don't expect that you guys would stay here for the whole thing anyway. So, don't worry about it. You're not offending us. Okay, Mr. Secretary, can we please read the consent agenda recommendation?
Board of Education approval is recommended for the list of, for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include March 6, 2023 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, February 27, 2023, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 27, 2023.
Support.
Okay, recommended action by Secretary Aiman, supported by Vice President Badun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the March 6, 2023 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, February 27, 2023, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 27, 2023. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Business report.
Thank you, Madam President. Board, I'll handle the business report on behalf of Ms. Penny Morgan. So, we have one action item, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Badun.
I'd like to request that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per Attachment 4A1.
Support.
Recommended action by Trustee Badun, supported by Trustee Aiman, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per Attachment 4A1. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Personnel report. Dr. Lazar.
So, a quick report this evening. All we have is the appointment of the Spring 22-23 coaches.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Williamson.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of spring coaches for its 2022-2023 school year. See Attachment 5A1.
Support.
Okay, recommended action by Trustee Williamson, supported by Trustee Barry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of spring coaches for the 2022-2023 school year. See Attachment 5A1. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Report, so we have some items for approval. Action items referencing board bylaws that have been completed. The first action item is Board Policy 0000, Board Bylaws. The first reading of the Board Policy 0000, Board Bylaws took place on February 6, and the second reading took place on February 27 of 2023. We are asking the Board to approve Board Policy 0000, Board Bylaw Sections 0100 through 0175.1, not including Sections 0144.1, 0144.3, and 0175.1 as presented in Attachment 6.A1.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure that board members understand that the ones we wanted to pull are pulled. So, we're gonna vote on the blanket ones first and then the individual ones are right after. I know the board members know, I want everyone at home to know too, so. Trustee Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Board Policy 0000, Board Bylaws, not including 144.1, 144.3, and 175.1 as presented in Attachment 6A1.
Support.
Okay, we have a recommended action by Trustee Fawaz, supported by Trustee Aiman, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Board Policy 0000, Board Bylaws, not including 0144.1, 0144.3, and 0175.1 as presented in Attachment 6A1. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. The second action item is to recommend Board Policy 0144.1, Compensation A. So, what you will see is number two and number three are the same board policies. One is marked as A, one is marked as B, and you will see the differences in the attachments. Please note that if the Board votes for A, they still have to put a vote on the table for B and vice versa.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Section 144.1, Compensation A. See Attachment 6A2.
Support.
That's $50 on here.
I was just gonna ask, can we be clear? A is the 50, B is the 100, right?
Correct, correct.
So, I want to, just so everybody understands. Okay, we have a recommended action by Trustee Sabah, supported by Trustee Badun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 0144.1, Compensation A. See Attachment 6A2. Any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Sabah.
Clarification, this keeps the per meeting at $50 per meeting instead of the suggested $100 per meeting in previous sessions, under B. So, it would be under 50 per meeting. Is that correct, Dr. Masalim?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for clearing that up, I could not find it.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Badun.
I, I personally wanna thank Trustee Sabah for explaining this better to me in the first read, or was it second?
Second read.
Second read. Shut some light on it and I appreciate his clarification to the people and the Board. So, thank you for that, Mr. Sabah.
Okay, thank you. Next item. Superintendent. Oh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Masalim?
Next item, Madam President, being that it is here, we have to vote on it, is Board Policy 0144.1, Compensation B. This was the one for the $100. So, being that it's on the table, so it has to have a vote. If you don't get a motion, you don't vote.
Does anybody wanna make this motion?
Negative.
Next item.
Very good. Next item is Board Policy 0144.3, Conflict of Interest A. That is under Attachment 6.A4.
Do you have it, Dr. Masalim?
I do.
Okay, can you read it, just so everyone can know what we're voting on?
I can, yes. So, Conflict of Interest A, the component that was requested for removal, or requested for a poll, deals with subsection D, that no board member shall hold a position of decision-making for school-related activities or groups outside of the Board of Education. This includes but is not limited to President or Vice President of school organizations, head coach, or any athletic or competitive teams, and/or any positions as such.
Okay, so if, just so everyone understands, if we vote yes for Conflict of Interest A, that means that we're voting to allow?
To not allow, so what you're saying?
To not allow.
To not allow.
Okay.
And then the other one is to allow.
So, if we vote no on Conflict of Interest A, that is to allow?
Correct. No, Conflict of Interest A is to not allow.
Not allow. Conflict of Interest A.
I said if we vote no.
If you vote no, then you're voting out this recommendation, which is to not allow. Because, I understand where you're coming.
Don't think of it that way, just think of it if you vote yes.
Please.
If you vote on A, what you're saying is no school board member can do this.
If you vote yes?
Yes. If we vote on this and vote yes, then we are eliminating the option for school board members to head up organizations within the school, like band, like, you know, PTA, like all that stuff.
So, if we, so if there's not a motion here, that went strict and that we have to vote yes on the next one?
That's correct.
To allow. Is that right?
Thank you, Trustee Sabah.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Masalim. I'm good.
As far as compensation, we're not changing any of that, correct?
No, that doesn't change.
Okay, so even if you are a band coach, basketball coach, and you are on the Board, you cannot be compensated?
No, you're a volunteer.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Negative.
Negative. Pass.
Okay, next item.
So, now we go to Conflict of Interest B. Board Policy 0144.3, Conflict of Interest B, which basically leaves it the way it is now.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 144.3, Conflict of Interest B. See Attachment 6A5.
Support.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Fawaz, supported by Trustee Sabah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 0144.3, Conflict of Interest B. See Attachment 6A5. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam President. And Board, so the next item, again, same process. Board Policy 0175.1A, School Board Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops. So, this attachment is 6A6, and in 6A6, this one only allows for state and does not allow for national.
Madam Chair.
This one?
Only allows for state.
Okay, trustees?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 175.1, School Board Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops A. See Attachment 6A6.
Sorry, I'm so confused on this.
Okay, so this one, sure.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, this is, I have, just have a passion for this. If we vote on A, you can go to conferences within the state of Michigan, which minimizes the expense for the district. If you vote on B, you allow the state and national conventions to be allowed for school member, school board members to go. So, if there's one in San Diego, California, we're gonna pay the per diem, the hotel, the airfare, and everything else in comparison to somebody driving to Traverse City, which is quite an expense.
So, if you vote yes on this?
On A.
If you vote yes on A, that means you are limiting it to?
Just the state.
State.
But this is, or Madam Chair.
Trustee Fawaz.
This is training, professional development, and I get that.
So?
So, but realistically, then we can actually vote for both of these, right? State and national.
If you vote on B, then it's both.
Okay.
So, we can, somebody can second it and then we can go into discussion, if that's how you, if that's what you guys wanna do.
Yeah, I'll support it and let's go into discussion.
Okay. So, we have a recommended action by Trustee Sabah, supported by Trustee Badun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 0175, that School Board Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops A. See Attachment 6A6. So, again, just to reiterate, this means that we are voting that school board members can only attend local and state conferences, not national conferences.
Request for clarification. This is, when we say only attend, technically just be reimbursed for. If there's something somewhere else somebody wants to go to?
Correct.
We can't limit them if they're paying for it.
Based on the language, it's reimbursement for?
Okay.
That's what Attachment 6A6 says.
Got it. And then if we, if it passes, then that's only state. But if it doesn't pass and B passes, then the district will allow, within certain budget, for national conferences. Is that right? Did I say it right? Okay, I understand it now, thank you.
Okay, I would like to comment on this.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, I do not think that any board member should ever be limited from furthering their education in a situation like this. We allow the superintendent, we allow staff members. I don't think that anybody, if that's the case, then we need to look at the whole picture of everybody else also. If, you know, if you feel like you wanna go and get yourself educated, it shouldn't be a problem. So, I would, yeah, I would be ready to take a vote on this one.
Do you have a comment? It says right here that Board Conference Requests shall be approved by the Board as a whole. So, I don't see why limiting it is an issue right now, if we just would never approve a national.
Can you say that again?
I'm sorry, I'm just saying right here. Board Conferences shall be approved by the Board as a whole. So, we have, if somebody wanted to limit it, like Hawaii, we as a Board could say no. But if somebody wants to go to Ohio, if we vote yes on the first one, then we can't go to Ohio for a conference. But we can, at the time the conference comes up, make the decision instead of limiting it now.
I would like to see what district in the state doesn't allow their board members. I'm just saying, it's a board comment. I'd like to see one district in the state that does not allow their board members not to be allowed to go to a national conference. This is just mind-boggling to me.
Trustee Fawaz.
I have to agree. I personally think that we shouldn't limit somebody, and that being said, the entire time I've been on the Board, nobody has gone, no one has gone national. But in the event that they want to better themselves, train, learn, develop, I think that they should have the option. But again, nobody's ever done it, but I think it should be there.
Trustee Sabah.
I have no problem with education. I have no problem with people furthering their knowledge. I have no problem with any of that. We've all run campaigns, we've all collected money for our campaigns. Those funds can be used for that. If you have campaign funds, then use them for that. Then you can still raise funds. To me, I would be interested, Dr. Masalim, over the last three years, has there been any board member that taken any trainings within the state or outside?
We've had some trainings within the state, yes.
How many board members?
I wanna say three.
Three, three people on this Board have gone.
On this current Board, one, on previous Board, actually two. This Board, one, and previous Board, one.
Okay, so we've had one person on this Board that's attended those.
Correct.
I guarantee you, it wasn't Potaski in December.
I don't know when it was.
Okay, and my point is, I have no problem with further.
Actually, it was, it was Traverse City in December.
I'm sorry, I'm in the middle, I didn't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me. I have no problem with people wanting to educate themselves, none whatsoever. I just don't feel like these kids and the money for these kids should be doing that. We talk about other school districts, we have 4,000 students here, okay? I don't, I can't speak for other school districts and who they send or don't send. I have no problem if you wanna go. Pay for it. If I wanna go educate myself right now, guess what? If I'm taking classes, I'm paying for it. That's all I'm saying. I have no problem with people that wanna do that. If you wanna do it within the state, that's fine, it's minimal expenses. But to pay for somebody to go to Orlando, or San Diego, or wherever, that's a whole different ball of wax. That's my point. This is all expenditure for me, has nothing to do with personal conflicts with anybody. I don't care who goes or doesn't wanna go. This is about the numbers. That's all I care about, is making sure that we're not utilizing funds inappropriately. And I know you guys think you're gonna go and pick up all this information, and if we're on the chopping block, then they should be, two different, two different scenarios. Superintendents go to their conferences, they make connections with other superintendents in policies, and other ways to run their districts. We're not running the district, per se. Superintendent is. That support for that should never be questioned. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, again, this is not personal with anybody, this is about the money. That's all I care about, is making sure we're watching the dollars and the cents for this school district. That is our number-one priority as school board trustees. That's it.
Trustee Barry? Oh, Trustee Fawaz and Trustee Barry.
I just, you said it, but I don't think you should limit, like you said, you wanna limit only the board members, but you don't wanna limit the superintendent. You don't wanna limit administration, you don't wanna eliminate staff. This is all, if it's purely about cost, then you should cut costs altogether. But you can't, you can't have, you can't have everybody else get trained and not, and not the Board. And again, I wouldn't go national, okay? And I don't, nobody has gone national. But the option should be there if they want to better themselves. But that's my opinion.
That's your opinion, I've spoken my piece, I don't have anything else to say.
Trustee Barry?
No, I'll pass. You can go to the vote.
Well, I mean, I just wanna, we.
Trustee Williamson?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate that we get to vote on each, it says right here, we get, we will, the Board will vote as a whole. So that if you say we can only go in the state, that means we couldn't go to a conference in Toledo. So? Well, I know you're against, you're against.
Again, I have no problem with everybody's opinion. I'm not arguing with any particular person, I'm just speaking, this is my, this is my view.
Right.
It's about the dollars and cents, that's what we're here to do, that's it.
That's fine.
You know what, I will take the, I do have a comment to make.
Trustee Barry?
Just an FYI, every Board has a budget set aside, and I asked for that to be shared with the Board. It wasn't shared the way that I thought it would be. A breakdown of, you know, your legal fees, your expenditures for conferences, all that, which is how.
That wasn't, what was requested is what was shared. If you didn't?
No, no, that's not how I, maybe I was misunderstood.
But when we shared it, we haven't received any feedback that you wanted something different.
Because she's not here, I was gonna give her feedback.
I understand, but I, but.
We can discuss that later.
That's fine.
We can discuss that later. But anyway, all neighboring districts, again, I do not believe that any board member should be limited to further educating themselves, just like superintendents go out there and meet other superintendents and do all that, board members can do the same. Thank you.
Okay, any other further discussion? Okay, so.
So, let's clarify the vote, please.
Let's clarify the vote. The vote is that if you vote yes, you are limiting board members to local and state conferences only. Or is everyone clear?
But if we vote, but if we vote yes on the next one, it still has to be upon Board approval. Is that correct, Dr. Masalim?
They're both upon Board approval.
Okay, so either way.
Well, then I have a question. So, every time somebody wants to go to a conference, the Board has to approve it?
That's up to the Board, that's what was in the policy. That's not something we created, this is what was.
Our current policy?
The current policy?
No, it wasn't.
No, it was not in the current policy.
Because we've gotten requests and it didn't have to go to the Board.
No.
Yeah, but these, but these were things that the Board asked to put in, which were put in, so.
Okay.
So, Madam President?
You can amend, you can amend either at this, at this discussion.
No, no, I get it, I just wanna make it clear for everybody listening that if you vote yes on this one that's on the table, it means that you are limiting conferences to local and state only and not national.
Without Board approval?
Upon Board approval.
With, upon Board approval. We did ask for that, we asked that.
We never had that before.
In both, no, we didn't, but that was the language in our first and second reads.
It was.
That was put in there, that with Board approval. So, if I wanna attend a conference?
I don't remember signing off.
Yeah, so if I wanna attend a conference in California, I can sign up to attend the conference, but it would be, it would have to be approved by the Board first.
And in second?
Where? That's even for local conferences?
Based on the language that was put in, yes. Now, if you?
I would like to amend that.
Yeah, you.
Well, I can't, it would have to be whoever made the motion.
Somebody would have to recommend an amendment to the motion, that's, that's all it would be.
I just, I don't know.
So, the good thing is?
I feel like that's a little constraining, so even if there's a conference in Livonia, the Board has to come together to approve that board member to go to that conference.
That's the way it's written, correct. So, Madam President?
Trustee Badun.
I want everybody to understand that this is kind of a beta, beta year for us on these, the Niola bylaws. We, at any point, the Board can get together and either amend, delete, or add. So, I just wanna put that out there too. So, if we do, if we do something where something comes up later, we still have the option, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Masalim, to amend that. So, like, I didn't even know we needed Board approval to go to Livonia on this one. Right? Well, now you do, yeah, so now it's, now that's understood.
If you vote this in?
You can amend.
We vote this in?
You can amend.
We need approval to go to Livonia. I just, I.
You can amend.
So, it's on you, if you wanna take a vote.
I also have another question, Dr. Masalim. When we send employees, district employees to conferences, whether they are local, state, or national, does any of that come before us?
No. Cause that's all within our.
Who do they get that approval from?
Can we have a professional quorum, please? Madam President?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can we get a better understanding from you how that process works?
Yes.
So, if teacher, you know, Mrs. Smith wants to go to a conference, what is her approval process?
So, the approval process is, it has to be approved prior to, it has to be written in our school improvement and district improvement plans. It has to be tied to the curriculum and the instruction that we are trying to improve. Also, the money has to be budgeted and set aside and approved by our federal and state auditors. Therefore, it's not just a fly-by-the-night type of deal. Moreover, those that do get approved to go, they come back, they present, they lead professional development, usually those that would go, now, we, we, I don't, have we sent anyone national? I don't think we've sent anyone national, I think it's all been local. Yeah, grand rep. Yeah, so usually for a national conference, what we try to do for a national conference is we try to present, and that's usually why we go, or unless if there's information at that national conference that, because all these conferences, we get that information well in advance. All those conferences come out a year in advance. So, what we do is we plan one year in advance. So, all of that is to improve and to help whatever our professional development plan is. They are, there are no conferences that are ever approved that wouldn't be approved by the federal or state auditors.
I just, I wanted to understand a little bit more of how that approval process works. So, if a teacher who, if it's a teacher who's requesting to go, does the principal approve?
So, if it's a teacher, it goes to the principal, then it gets kicked up to whatever department it is. So, if it's school improvement or district improvement, it goes to Dr. Lazar. If it's social emotional learning, it goes to Mrs. O'Hara, if it's in the business office, and then the final approval is me.
Got it. So if it, I'm sorry, so if an employee wants to go, so really there are, so if an employee wants to go to a conference, if a district employee, it's got to go through four approvals?
Correct.
Okay, trustee Sabo.
Uh, Dr. Mosal, I think we asked this last time, I'm just gonna repeat it for clarification. When, when you or the administrators or the teachers go, where does that funding come from?
The funding all comes from either federal or state grants.
So it's grant-based?
Ninety percent of it is grant-based, there is some, some conferences, and usually those are local, like RISA, or, you know, even Grand Rapids, where it can come not from a federal grant, because we have that money set aside in the general fund for those conferences. Because, for example, in the business department, they'll attend a National Business Association Conference, let's say in Lansing. That comes from the general budget, because it's not tied to the curriculum. But it's tied to the, the school funding and the improvement process of cost effectiveness.
So it's from grants?
Most of it is from grants, yes, vast majority.
If we go, where is that from?
It comes from the general budget.
Which means it comes from what, what's in the general budget?
The general budget is anything that is direct instruction, direct curriculum, anything that is district-wide mandated, like staffing, that is not, that is not federal-funded.
Athletics?
Athletics, textbooks.
Textbooks, that's general fund.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I think we'll do a roll call vote on this, Mr. Secretary, please.
Trustee Fawaz?
No.
Trustee Sabo?
Yes.
Trustee Williamson?
No.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Bedun?
No.
Forgot yourself.
Trustee Amon, no, Madam President?
I forgot how to vote. Yes.
No's habit.
What's your vote?
I said no.
Need to speak that up, Mr. Amon.
I said no when I said-
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion fails, correct?
Correct.
Motion fails. All right, next item, Dr. Mosal.
So board policy zero one seven five dot one, B, school board conferences, conventions, and workshops. This is an attachment six A seven, it allows for both national and state. Please note to the board that in the language that was placed, there's still a recommendation that it gets board approved.
Correct.
If the board chooses to amend that, they can do that as well.
Yeah, so, you know, nobody amended that first one, just to let you guys know.
Failed, so now we can amend this one.
If you choose to.
Okay, are we discussing or not?
No, we don't even have a motion on the floor. Madam Chair? Trustee Fawaz?
I'd like to recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve section zero one seven five point one, school board conferences, conventions, and workshop B, see attachment six A seven. However, I would also like to make the amendment without board approval.
Support. Okay, recommended action by trustee Fawaz, supported by trustee Barry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve section zero one seven five point one, school board conferences, conventions, and workshops B, see attachment six A seven, excluding board approval.
Thank you for the better wording.
As an amendment. Correct?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Trustee Amon?
Is there a way that we can keep it where the board votes on the national ones instead of the local ones?
You can, so the person who made the motion would have to amend that, or you can suggest the amendment, and the person who made the motion would have to agree, and then the person who seconded would have to agree to second that.
Okay.
At this point.
So would be able to suggest that, as if we kept the national, as still the board votes on the national one, but the local ones?
So trustee Fawaz, trustee Amon is asking for an additional amendment where you would approve national, board approval would be necessary for national conventions, but not necessary for local and state conventions. Do you, do you support that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Barry, do you support?
No.
Okay. So, any further discussion?
What's the, what's the-
So it goes without voting for-
So now we can vote on this, okay? And it either passes or fails, and if it fails-
Which passes or fails, they don't need a vote, or they do need a vote on national?
So trustee Amon suggested, right, an additional amendment. Trustee Fawaz agrees.
Okay.
Trustee Barry, who seconded the motion, does not agree.
Okay.
Okay, so-
So we default back to the original?
We can go back to a new motion, or, but you still have to vote on this. You have to, we still have to vote on this one.
So, yeah, you asked if there's discussion, there is discussion.
Trustee Sabo?
To some people, this may seem silly, because we've never done this like this before. Complacency in this world is because we've never done things like this before. We've, why are we changing? Because change is inevitable. And if you don't change and take things further, and allow people to think outside of the box that they've gotten used to, then you become complacent. And again, our number one priority as trustees is to watch the financial health of this district. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm not saying anybody's going to take advantage of it, I'm not saying anybody's going to utilize it for their own benefit, okay? I'm saying it's expensive, and I'm saying it comes from general funds, and I'm saying it comes from the kids directly, okay? I think you guys know, I've said it before, I don't care if I get paid or not, and I hope to God we stop the dinners. It's not about that. It's about every penny counts for these kids, that's all I'm trying to say. Some of you are taking it personally, I'm attacking you and your travel schedules, it's nothing to do with anybody personally, it's always about the money. So for, you know, for this motion to come here, again, if I want to take a national conference, I'll pay for it myself. I have no problem doing that. I'm not gonna do it at the back of these kids, that's the only thing that upsets me, is everything comes at the back of these kids.
I find my comment.
Trustee Barry?
Again, there's always budgets that are put aside for board members, so board members can further their education, so board members can have legal counsel, so there are those perks, and I'm gonna call them perks, because we are elected officials and there are things that are expected of us, okay? And furthering your education is expected of a board member. So that's why I feel that we should be able to make, we're adults, we're all adults here, nobody's going to abuse it. Um, and that's why I feel that any, an adult should be able to make their own decision on this.
Okay, so I was wrong. I just want to clarify that. So if Salwa has agreed to the amendment, anybody else can now second that amended motion. So we have an amendment suggestion on the floor by trustee Amon, I'm gonna try to keep everybody clear on the steps here. So we have-
But we didn't vote on the first one.
You don't have to, so we have a original motion by trustee Fawaz, which was seconded by trustee Barry, um, which was amended during the motion. At that point, trustee Amon suggested another amendment, which was approval for national conferences, okay? But don't have to seek approval for state and local conferences. At that point, trustee Fawaz, the original motioner, accepted that amendment. At this point, I will ask for a second of that amended motion.
Support.
Okay, so now, we have-
Didn't he just?
He supported.
He supported his own motion?
Well, he suggested it, it doesn't matter, it's like when you make a motion for something, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have, I'm gonna try to read this. We have a recommended action that the Crestwood Board of Education approves section zero one seven five point one, school board conferences, conventions, and workshops B, see attachment six A seven, without board approval for local and state conferences, with board approval for national conferences. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Do a roll call?
We can do a roll call, uh, Mr. Secretary. Can you repeat yourself, please? Yep. So, we have a recommended action by trustee Fawaz, supported by trustee Amon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approves section zero one seven five point one, school board conferences, conventions, and workshops B, see attachment six A seven, amended without board approval for state and local conferences, with board approval for national conferences. Can we get a roll call?
Trustee Fawaz?
Yes.
Trustee Sabo?
No.
Trustee Williamson?
Yes.
Trustee Amon, yes, trustee Barry?
I'm still confused.
God, it means that you can go to a conference-
Right.
And you don't have to get approval if it's a local or state conference.
But you will have to get approval for-
But you would have to get approval if it's a national conference.
I wanted to be able to do it, okay, so, but that's the only option on the floor is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna go with yes.
Trustee Bedun?
No.
Trustee Elzaya?
No. Trustee Amon?
I said yes.
Oh, yes. So, one, two, three.
You have one.
So we have yes. Okay, so the motion passes.
That's all we had, Madam President, thank you.
Okay, now, if you want to go home, I need, no, I'm just joking. We are at the point, thank you, Dr. Mosal, we are at the point in our meeting where we will take public comment. None, no public comment. So now we will take a board comment. Trustee Sabo?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, I'll just get back on my, the same message I've given numerous times throughout last year or so. Tonight, we voted on whether or not school board members can participate in activities and head up organizations. And, um, when we first came out with this, I somewhat supported it, but the more I thought about it, the more I realized we still are not where we need to be with parent participation. And we've heard this from our, our former trustee, Ms. Janoon, and our current trustee, Mr. Williamson, that we can't get people to, to fill in for anything. And it's, it's alarming, because all I hear when I'm out is how much parents love where the district is headed from an educational perspective, and they love how their children are changing in front of their eyes, yet those same children are in band, or in theater, or play a sport, and we don't have many people watching. I'm just alarmed, I'm alarmed, I'm confused, I'm concerned, and, look, I'm not here to raise adults, but if I can open up one family's eyes and one set of parents' eyes to be more involved in this school district and the activities for these kids, then I've done my job. I can't stress that enough. Every one of us can say that our children are the most important things in our lives. For all of us, all four thousand plus students are the most important things in our lives, and we attend everything that we can attend. I just want to stress that, and I also want to stress disagreement is not always conflict, it is healthy. We don't have to agree on things as adults, as human beings, but we need to be respectful of one another and each other's thought processes. Because someone agrees with me or disagrees with me does not mean they are good or bad, it just means they disagree with me. We all have opinions, we all emphasize why our opinions are the way they are, and what leads us to those opinions, and we need to respect one another. And I, I have no disrespect for anybody here or watching, but I think this is healthy for us not to agree on everything, and I'm glad that we are talking about things regardless, and the majority does rule, and it showed tonight, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Williamson?
All right, I'd just like to thank my fellow board for passing, allowing president, meaning, allowing board members to still be in parent groups. It will help out a lot, at least in band. Um, I just want to, I said it last week, but I'll say it again, the high school is playing the band festival at Thurston, I'm sorry, eighth graders are playing at Thurston this Thursday at eleven fifty, and then the high school is playing Livonia Stevenson at eight fifteen PM. And this is just a festival, it's not a competition, they just get scored. Yeah, they'll just get a score and they can tell how, how they're progressing. And then this Saturday, Drama's holding a craft show at the high school from ten to three. And so, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barry?
Yes, I just want to compliment the new window decals that are at this location, are these up at all the locations?
High school here, and I don't think we're doing it at the elementary school.
It looks very nice. Um, and one more thing that I've been thinking about when, and I keep forgetting to mention it, when they took the pictures down, there was all that art, pictures of the graduating classes of every year, do you remember those that were up?
I do not.
We were told they would, they would put them back up after they painted, and it was a nice talking piece for students, because they'd go around and look for their pictures.
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
They should have been, we were told that they were going to save them.
I can check.
So if we could please, I think it would be a nice talking piece for the students, and it, you know, it went back quite a few years. So I would appreciate that. And with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Amon?
Um, just real quick, I wanted to say congratulations to the boys and girls basketball teams on finishing their seasons. Uh, also the wrestling team for Crestwood and Riverside. Great season, great work, loved seeing them, you know, playing and working hard. Uh, also, I think, trustee Williamson, isn't there a theater with the princesses this weekend also?
Yeah, that's with the craft show.
Oh, that's with the craft show, okay.
Yeah, they're doing both at the craft show.
Um, so yes, so the Crestwood Theater is doing a, um, come meet your characters on March eleventh from twelve to four, uh, which would be nice for the kids. And I know our next meeting isn't until the end of the month, so I know Ramadan's gonna be starting before that, so I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Ramadan, who's gonna be practicing, that's it.
Wonderful, thank you, trustee Bedun?
Um, quick update, the boys were, the boys' basketball team are playing in districts right now. They were down, they just made a comeback, I was asking what the score was, good luck to them. Um, unfortunately, we weren't able to participate, we always want to try to, as trustee Sabo said, more parent, community involvement, that's what we try to do. Uh, SpongeBob, I don't know the exact dates.
The first and second weekend in May.
First or second weekend in May.
No, and, first and-
First and second weekend in May, um, for sure, I, I appreciate our drama team for opening it up for ensemble for the middle schoolers. I know a few of them were excited about that, so Ms. Kubits is doing, keep up the great work there. I just, you know, this past weekend, when was, we, we had a, a little bit of a seminar, call it a seminar, and one thing, I want to go back to trustee Sabo's comments, when we don't agree on something and we have discussion, again, I can't agree with him more, it's healthy, right? I think every single person on this board is a very, brings a dynamic piece, and if we could pull all these pieces together, which you are seeing live today, right? I think it's very healthy for the kids, healthy for the administration, the staff. Uh, we do a lot of talking about the kids, for sure, but our kids' success comes at our staff, right? Our staff and our parents. The parents need to be involved more, the parents need to help, they need to be the support staff to our staff, and vice versa. Our communication, I think, we're, we've come a long way, right? Our communication is getting better as a district. But I can't reiterate enough and how much the parents need to be more involved in their student studies and activities. It's, after-school activities are not a daycare. It's, it's something you should be a part of, because your kids are gonna remember it forever. And I, I just want to, just to piggyback on trustee Sabo. Every Monday, Wednesday, the football team is involved in a camp, and they do this camp at Elite Sports, it's a paid camp by the kids. And I can tell you, just today, we had, I want to say over forty, forty-five kids, and that's, that's something that's open to the parents to come in and watch, and see what's going on, and see what they're doing. Our, our student athletes are thriving, and our grade point averages are, I believe, trustee Sabo, are they over a three?
Yes.
They're over a three point oh as an average, that's just one athletic team, right? So I know band has something, I know drama theater has something, I know basketball's doing something. We're trying to implement this across the board, where we have student athletes, not athletes that are students. It's very important, and I think we gotta continue to do that, and that's all I have.
Um, I will reiterate all the above from all the board members before me.
I'll start with you next time, so.
That's okay. That's okay. I'll add, Wednesday is International Women's Day, so wear purple, celebrate all your women. March twenty-first is Rosie the Riveter Day, so if you, you know, celebrate that, too. Wear your bandanas, your coveralls, and that, that's it.
Thank you so much. Okay, my turn, which nobody ever leaves me anything, but March is reading month, so I will encourage everybody to get into a classroom and read. I know that we got some emails, or if there's a particular school that you want to go to, I encourage you to reach out to that school and get in those classrooms. I've done it once already this month, and I, I have so much fun doing it. I think I'm a good reader, too, so. I did want to also say that, so the Crestwood and Riverside robotics teams have joined up for a competition that's gonna take place April fifth through the eighth, and they are looking for sponsors, and if you want to sponsor, you can do so by clicking on the link at the school website, so Riverside Middle School's website. You can also do that by clicking on the robotics website, or you can contact Mr. Peter Marbeyus if you would like to, anybody would like to sponsor the robotics competition. I, I think it's worth also repeating Ramadan Barak to everybody in the community who will be observing this year, and I definitely think it's worth repeating International Women's Month. And congratulations to all the women out there who are plugging away. I did want to thank my board, this board, we are all different, but we all have the same mission. And, you know, we're, we're working towards that mission, and we're not always gonna agree, and we can agree to disagree, but when we get up and we leave this table, we're back to being friends. So thank you all very much for your participation. Dr. Mosal, thank you to you and to your team who, you know, come in here day in, day out and put up with us.
Our pleasure, thank you.
I definitely appreciate that. So thank you very much, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move forward.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Bedun, supported by Trustee Sabo. Any discussion? Hearing none. We are adjourned. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. At seven fifty-six. Thank you.